Welcome everyone to the Bonner Springs City Council meeting for this evening and ask if everyone would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then can remain standing for the invocation which will be returned this evening by Pastor Corey Waterman with Proclaim Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Lord God, I come before you and I pray that you would give this council your judgments, God. I pray that you would give them your righteousness that they may discern wisely decisions for people of Bonner Springs. I pray that you would help them to defend the afflicted, to work for the good of the city for those who are in need. I pray that you would give them compassion and grace. I pray that you would bless them and through them that you would bless the city. I pray that, pray that most of all, that you would be blessed by what happens here, by the decisions that are made in council, who's been in the Bonner Springs community.
Thank you. And if we could have just a moment of silence for all those that have been affected by the terrible national disasters across our country in the last, last short period of time. And in recognition of this being September 11th, 16 years after 9/11, and the 2,977 people whose lives were lost on this day. Thank you all for being here, our cap team. And we will move on to item number one, which are citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda, if there's anyone who would like to stand and address the city council. Seeing none, we'll move right along to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the August 28, 2017 city council meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, and appointments to boards and commissions. Anything to be pulled by the city staff, by citizens, council members' questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor Harrington would like to make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. A second or vote please.
Cooper?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
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 Rolling right along to agenda item number six. This is ordinance to adopt the standard traffic. Agenda item concerning an agreement for right-of-way easement. Staff.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Donclos, City Mayor. This is a petition filed from the city manager, representing Turner, and the city clerk myself. It's dealing with the acquisition of property on the north side of Riverview, 118 and 110th Street. Any mountainous exceed $6,000 for the acquisition of both permanent right-of-way and temporary construction easement. This is the final piece to the project to get it delivered, at least for the acquisition reflected in the actual agreement.
Thank you very much. Anything to add by citizens? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the payment for the acquisition of right-of-way and temporary construction easement for the Riverview Culvert replacement project.
Second.
We've been seconded. Any questions, concerns, we'll start down here. Done.
I'm just, I bet the residents on Riverview will be happy to see we're moving forward with this.
Not just the residents, there's a lot of Bonner Springs that utilize that area, as well as the school district and, yeah.
But they haven't had, hopefully they won't have to deal with it like that. They won't have to turn it around in their driveway anymore.
Is there a timeline on this project?
Start by the end of the month.
It's a 90-day project once the report's been taken care of, so we would look at later on this winter before it's.
But we're getting into the winter months, see how that goes.
Very good. No other questions, concerns? Vote please.
Early?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. And now we'll move on to the new agenda item number seven, which is an ordinance to adopt the standard traffic ordinance, 2017 edition. Staff.
Mayor Nicholas and Cooper, this is our annual standard traffic ordinance that's prepared by the League of Kansas Municipalities. The city attorney's office reviewed this edition and made the same recommendations for the last year.
Thank you. Anything to be added by the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the standard traffic ordinance, 2017 edition.
Second.
We've been seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, starting down here, Mr. Stevens.
No motion.
Yep, nope.
No.
Vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number eight, ordinance concerning the adoption of the Uniform Public Offense Code, 2017 edition. Staff.
Mayor Nicholas and Cooper, this is the annual Uniform Public Offense Code that's prepared by the League of Kansas Municipalities. The city has reviewed this edition as well and recommends the same amendments besides the animal cruelty regulations. The UPOC this year better defines what animal cruelty is and the type of Class A violation. So we are deleting our portion of the animal cruelty regulation from our code.
Anything to add by the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance to adopt the Uniform Public Offense Code, 2017 edition.
Second.
We've been seconded. Questions, concerns, comments?
Just a little bit of clarification on Article 10, Section 10.5, unlawful discharge of firearms. We're doing away with that, is that correct?
No. It's the same as we've been adopting each year, so we delete and omit the UPOC regulation, which is no firearms, and we adopt ours.
Okay, so ours is not changing?
Ours is not changing.
Okay. So I need to know.
Other questions?
George.
I'm good. Just question is, do we have to actually go through then and actually have a resolution to revoke the current ordinance that we're going to replace, or if we're putting back to place in view for public offense code? We recommend we delete our regulations on animal cruelty in favor of those listed, but do we have to have an actual?
This will be that.
This will?
This is.
Okay. Because the motion didn't state then, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, it's, as long as it's within the.
Okay. That's it.
Very good. No other questions or concerns? Vote please.
Early?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now I have something to work with again, than the next year. On to item number nine, final payment and acceptance of the West Front Street Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project.
Mayor. City Council, this is a small change order, $250. We get some changes out in the field based on the size adjustments and related, some work that was in our specs and added. The exterior chimney seals, that was kind of a trade-off, and ended up putting a drop pipe in, item number two there, to handle the hydrogen sulfide gases as a cleaner option. Those changes created a change of an amount of $250, so without approval, we also pay an amount of $8,235 in terms of expenses. An acceptance of the construction project of the West Front Street Sanitary Sewer Rehab for $86,900.
Very good. Questions? Thank you. Any other questions, concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve change order number one in the amount of $250. authorize the final payment to Utility Solutions LLC in the amount of $8,235.25, and accept the project as complete.
Second.
We've been seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, we'll start down here.
Yeah, just, I guess the items two and three, will they, are they a better solution than item number one was, that we're removing?
The, issue with the additive for that concrete was cot shield that we were dealing with, cot shield at the time on 134th Street project. Trying to get some reassurance that that product is working as well as it's supposed to work.
Got you.
So at the time, we decided to put that drop pipe in that secondary manhole, the original two manholes that was replaced. The first one probably going to need the protection, in our specs, we required and put them on all the manholes, and that has not changed. We've actually gotten additional information from the cot shield, that's a project, but we have not removed that specification. So the drop pipe to control the H2S at the wet well should work. Engineering standards.
Very good. Sir?
Steven?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. And that brings us to item 10, our city manager report.
An item that the region has been working on through ARC is Pulse Point, which is an app that actually sends out alerts to citizens to try and, or that sign up that have training and hands-on CPR. This is done when somebody in a nearby public place suffers cardiac arrest. There's also a notification that goes out to let you know where AEDs are located. Chief Blackstone has been forefront of this, working with TCK EMS and fire, is going. So if you actually go onto your cell phone, you're able to download this application, actually see where AEDs are located throughout Bonner Springs. And then, like I said, if you are certified to administer CPR, you're actually be alerted in an effort to obviously get people out as first responders, in essence, make sure that.
Send her the better.
Somebody out if they have cardiac arrest.
Send her the better.
So again, that's gone live. We've been working on that for a few months now. I was fortunate to have the beta version up at the trial. I can tell you, it's a pretty streamlined approach. Also including your packets, if you haven't heard, there is a historic trolley tour that will take place Saturdays, January 3rd from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Basically, it's going to be a program hosted by some local historians, you may know them, Roger Miller and Blazi Smith. It's going to start at the April Hall of Fame and go throughout the city of Bonner Springs, talking about some of the historical locations and events that took place in this community. Tickets, I believe, are still available, and those are listed, you can pick those up at a lot of downtown venues. And then lastly, just wanted to make note, the state of Kansas has long been regarded as a local management met up source. The state celebrated 100 years of city management in the state of Kansas. That was in February 17, 1917. That the governor signed a bill authorizing the adoption of the city manager form of government for Kansas cities. To date, that has included 73 Kansas cities, including the city of Bonner Springs and two counties. All in all, four out of five Kansans live in a city or county that are served by a local manager. So I've included what I think is a really good article that was written by a professor from Wichita State that sort of encapsulates what he calls this experiment in good governance. So I encourage you all to read that.
Very good. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to item, agenda item 11, our city council items, and I believe we'll start down here. Sir?
I saw the note that they're going to begin demolition of the police department buildings. Do we know how long that will take?
I don't. It's a matter of a few days. They're out there right now, they dropped off a very big piece of equipment in the back. The police are going to go through and do some, some training in the building, unlikely tomorrow, so it'll be a little bit of a.
Move your gunfire.
The only other thing is, I would invite you all to come down to Dancing in the Streets, the local gym is doing zumba classes in the parking lot at Centennial Park. If you want to join me in realizing exactly how out of shape I am, it's quite fun.
My only thought or question at this point is, with our Saturday marketplace, do we
have a toilet facility down there now? I mean, it was taken away after Tiblo Days, and then it wasn't there the next week.
I know Travis had a chance to skip, I don't know if that's.
I talked to them today, if I may interrupt, and it's in the hands of Teresa, and it's supposed to be there. I called about that myself, and we're right there, and that's who's got it. She's going to get it, so let's hope it gets back. Sorry, Bob.
That's okay. I'm just, I want to make sure.
Yeah, me too.
If we've agreed to have one there, then we get one there.
It was sort of a mix-up.
Yeah, it got picked up.
That's what I figured, but I thought, well, somebody might forget about getting it back there if we're not mentioned, so.
My turn? Well, in that vein, seeing that, you know, I'm short here on this council, so I'm going to have to tilt my lance a lot of windmills before I go. I would like to say that the bike show was a great success again this year, raised $3,500 about for the Bonner Springs City Library, a lot of fun, never no trouble. And I concur, zumba looked fun, made me want, yeah, and it was well-packed. It was, it was pretty cool on that. And the farmer's market, I would like to see the city, you know, kind of libraries took the lead on that, but it's working out good, it brings people downtown on Saturdays. I'd like to see the city kind of help, more support, we have supported it, but anything we can do to help that keep going, because that's helping downtown on a Saturday. I have two things that I'd really like to talk about before I get off the council, and I've had people come to me, and you kind of mentioned earlier, the shooting, Bonner Springs is really the only place left in Wyona County you can shoot firearms. Well, there's people living up in, there's never, Deerfield's one, especially when they start the new project up there, if they do. You can shoot right outside there, and that's really not, it's just not cool anymore up there. There's people that can shoot up on Riverview between 134th and K-7. That's, you know, they make, I'm an NRA guy, and I believe in it.
Just to clarify, you can't shoot in Deerfield?
No.
But they, they do have a map that they, you can.
There is a map.
Yeah.
But it's, the firearms are too close, their rifles traveled a long way, even the .22. And you can shoot right over off 142nd and Kansas Avenue. That's a little close to some of them neighborhoods. We need to look at it. Again, I know we visited a few years ago, it's really, and you can shoot up there in some of your backyards up off Riverview and K-7. That's too close to businesses.
I believe those are outside the area that's, it's allowed.
No, it is allowed up there.
K-7 and Riverview?
Back down Riverview a little bit, yes, it's way too close.
Yeah, but.
I'd look at the map and see, I'd like to revisit it and see about that. You know, over there by where we're redoing the bridge, you can shoot, but, you know, it's about the last really rural parts. But some of the places are getting just too close to homes. And I would also like to bring up before I get off the council, dumpsters, they look pretty good, they put the one at Dairy Queen in that, in an enclosure. Now, I know these people are grandfather, and they have to change the footprint of the building, you know, I was told it was different, and I had that, the last city clerk and them said, well, a new business comes, it changes. Well, then I got told, no, we've got to change the footprint of the building. We've give people a chance with this grant we have, we pay 90% of it, and that's a pretty good chunk of money, $4,000. He put up 400. Well, the people won't do it. I gotta do that, I'm not going to do it. There, I saw downtown, a case in point, I saw a film on the internet of the farmer's market, and the guy's sitting there playing music, a nasty old dumpster sitting right there. They should be enclosed, we give people plenty of opportunity to do it, and they won't do it. I'd like to see about this grandfather stuff, you know, maybe force them, we still, we still got that money, let's pay the, let's pay to get them done. That's all I got on that. That's just one of the things, before I get off the council, I would like to tilt my lance at that windmill. Thank you, people, for listening to me. I have many more next week.
I have nothing additional to add.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And I just would, with your concerns, I would suggest you speak with the city manager and see if you guys can formulate a plan, something that could be brought back to the council for them to consider. You know, there's, there's lots of options. And he, he might have more options for you. I also wanted to take an opportunity to thank Vicki Kobayaka Freeman and the whole, their whole business and family for the bike show that raised so much money for the library. That was a great charity, charitable activity that they did, and it was very well received, and it looked to be very well attended while I was there, it was a bunch of people. So another fun activity in downtown Bonner that brought a lot of people in, so raising $3,500 is nothing to sneeze at, and the library, I'm sure, appreciates it greatly. The big dumpster, we're talking about dumpsters, but this is a little bit different dumpster, the Tiblo Days dumpster, that is the size of a roll-off, rollback, is still on the street out behind the coffee shop. And so you might check on that. I had an opportunity this last week to attend the conference Midwest Public Risk put on, as well as a lot of city staff, and I, I have to convey how impressed I am with the level of continuing education, the opportunities that Midwest Public Risk has made available to all of the cities, but especially Bonner Springs. They had some nationally recognized speakers that were there and conveyed a lot of information. I know that it was valuable to our human resources, HR, Carol Sharp, and some of the topics were concerned how to keep people engaged, and not just people, but employees, and how to work with them, and benefits that may have worked for one generation may not be as desirable to another generation. So it was, it was quite, quite a, quite a conference, they had a lot of opportunity there, and I learned quite a bit. One of the things they had was a simulator, driving simulator there, and had an opportunity to get in a police car and be challenged with texting while driving. And of course, I, being kind of a smart aleck, as soon as they said, okay, now go ahead and park, it was hard to drive these simulators, they weren't just like a car, so it was a little bit harder. And as soon as they said, okay, go ahead and text, I pulled over and stopped, and they said, oh, you're the first one that's done that. That wasn't the point, they didn't want me to do that. So they got me back out on the road, and I said, well, you know, these phones are so smart, you can talk to them, and they said, go right ahead, talk to your phone and see if that'll do it. And it still is too distracting to use your electronic device and, and expect to be able to drive any vehicle on a road. So I would like to make sure that everyone knows they shouldn't text and drive, and it, it, you don't need to go to a simulator to find out how important it is. So please, don't text and drive and be safe, and don't voice to text to drive and think you can be safe, because it all takes, it is all distracting. And the, I think that was all I was going to make mention of. That's about everything, unless I remain open for questions, unless anyone has a question for me?
Are you retiring coming up?
No, sir.
No. Huh?
Stocks and crowds.
Okay. That's all.
Travis, did you have a question?
I was going to add to the dumpster conversation, the one there at the park is, Brian had offered to pay his share to get into this enclosure. The dumpster is actually on city property, is a private dumpster on city property, it's not supposed to be there, but there's no real federal alternative, and Brian Hunt said that the city would not pay to enclose a private dumpster.
On city property.
On city property. It's one of those gray areas, you know, they can't put it down where it's supposed to be, it blocks traffic.
There's no gray area.
Second Street there. But the city actually owns 12 feet back into, into that land, so it's, that's basically where the enclosure conversation stopped on that dumpster.
So could a approach, a pad driveway be a part of, be included in part of the enclosure?
I don't see why not, since it's entirely on city property.
Might run that up the flagpole and see if, if including some part of that, because one of the biggest problems with dumpster enclosures is the asphalt or whatever right out in front of it. And continuing to have that asphalt assaulted over and over is going to lead to nothing but disrepair. So if, if that approach could be somehow included or designed or something on that 12 feet, maybe, so if you, or if you might hand that off to somebody who could look at that, and, and that might help with that particular dumpster, I don't know if it's feasible to have that for all these dumpsters.
Mayor Harrington, there was many, we, there was all kinds of designs you could use, and one of them was concrete approaches, the ones I remember seeing, because we had about three or four. And it was a good deal, we gave these people a good deal, nobody wants to respond, and that one, I could see, I see that.
So it sounds like we have an interested property owner that might participate, and we just need to make a workable solution, so.
We found out it actually wasn't his property.
Right, so we'll go ahead and, and see if you and you and you and.
What I can tell you is that the program that started a few years ago, spent about $15,000 closing dumpsters, so it's being utilized. The one that helped it all do was, was something that Mr. Sloan had worked on with three different property owners to put that closure. three different property owners to put that closure on Oak Street. That was part of that program.
And it looks better.
And it does, and it solved, I think, an issue, so I just wanted to make everybody aware that that program is being utilized and has been, so to the tune of about $15,000, because there is a need to be worked on, absolutely, but we need those property owners that have those to come forward and actually make applications to do so.
So you're saying we've enclosed some more than just that one?
Yes.
Should I, have we?
What's that?
Really?
Yeah, I think it's at 3, 4, 3, 5,000.
Well, Miller did his, when he bought that quick claim, and he had to do that right. We didn't pay for that, did we?
T-shirt, yeah.
Yes, so he paid for that one. I know some people have hounded about it, but haven't really done it. I'd like to know where some others, you know, you made them do the one up there by that.
Behind the lawyers.
Your ears are getting long. I'm not going to say anymore. I'll let it go.
Anything else? Any other questions for me? We stand adjourned.